First of all, thank everyone for coming. And just a quick housekeeping thing before we get started. This is crazy. These microphones, they're all green right now. And if, I guess do not touch them as they. It's impossible for her to know if they're working or not until after the recording is done. So if you leave it just as they are, they should work. Everybody's, everybody's voice is okay. Our first thing we should do is do some introductions. Obviously, welcome to Councilmember-elect Josh McBride for coming in. I thought it might be nice to go around the table and just introduce everybody. So everyone knows you and you know who we are. But I'm Jason, we're here as the city manager. We've talked a couple of times.
Yes.
Yeah, welcome, welcome to City Council.
Thank you.
I can pass this around or you guys prefer.
Are you undercover? To give a face.
Plain clothes.
Plain clothes.
Saul over at Police Chief.
Okay. Josh McBride.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And you're entering Mountain Dew this late night.
I'm gonna have to drink Mountain Dew this late night.
Wait till you get a couple of those meetings that go till 10:30, 11 o'clock. You'll be glad.
Start with the monster at that point.
Okay. Perry Oaks, I'm the one, the dot.
Dot.
Alcoy, Councilmember. And it's been a pleasure.
We miss you, Perry.
Yeah. That's been great. Well, Linda Greenwood, Community Development Director.
Mike Blackman, Council, and I take these to bed with me.
Lee does too, and he sleeps like a baby.
Probably got an IV hooked up to you while he.
John Adams, Councilmember.
Marian Nelson, Finance Director.
Josh Bowne, Public Works.
Abby Hunt, Council.
Paul Erickson, Fire Chief.
Tammy Tran.
Ryan Johnson, Power.
Cole Stavens, Parks and Recreation.
Ryan Judd, IT.
And I just need to say, if Abby and I would have run it, I would have beat her because I beat her by 300 votes from last time.
Shh. Okay, Perry.
Wow.
Sounds like a challenge to me.
She beat me by nine votes. Revo.
And then we have Ann Marie back there.
Yeah, don't forget Ann Marie. This place run.
The glue that binds us all together.
Taking it on track.
So tonight's agenda, we're gonna try to keep this to two hours. We know that weeknight, you've got another council meeting coming up tomorrow night. And so what we want to cover tonight is first, just a quick review of our strategic planning. This year, we met last February with the council and department heads and kind of laid out some priorities that we all kind of agreed to. The department heads got together again, kind of looked at those priorities from February and kind of added some of their thoughts. And so we'll go over those things. And then really tonight, the main purpose is to really hone in on three or four of these important strategic priorities in the coming years. And those are, you know, what to do with the West Side Fire Station, the Operation Center, the library building, kind of coming up with an employee plan in general. And then hopefully, we're out of here by nine o'clock, like I said. And this is just gonna be high-level stuff. Of course, we don't have the time to get into the weeds or go down any rabbit holes tonight. This is kind of touching base to see if the council seems to feel comfortable, ask your questions, things like that with, you know, we want to see if you're comfortable with the direction that we're heading on some of these priorities. All right, so I think the one thing that kind of binds us all together on these strategic priorities is our mission statement. And I know we always bring this up in every budget work session, and it's on Josh's wall, it's on my wall in my office. But I really think this mission statement just sums up everything we do in the city, why it's important. And that's to make life better in Kaysville for future, for current and future residents. And we do that through our services. Why is that ship there? So we're reading this book as a department head group right now. Every six months, we kind of pick a leadership book and we read it, you know, in our spare time, and then we'll kind of chat about it in our department head meetings. And right now, we're reading Alfred Lansing's The Endurance. It's a true story. If you, I don't know if you've ever heard of this story or seen it, you know, any documentaries, but it's an incredible story about an expedition that headed out of England in 1914, and they were going to be the first group to cross the Antarctic continent by foot. And on the way down, about January 1915, the ship Endurance that you see the picture of became trapped in ice. And they just sort of sat there in ice for month after month after month, just drifting in the middle of the wetter sea. Bleak, awful conditions, limited supplies, dark. And then about a year, a little over a year later, they finally made it to a little island, deserted island called Elephant Island. And from there, they left most of the crew, 27 men in the crew, and a few of them headed out in a rowboat, basically, to find the nearest outpost. So they crossed 800 miles of the most treacherous seas in the world, you know, Antarctic seas, you know, choppy, wet, cold. And 800 miles, they made it to this other outpost island. Then they had to cross uncharted mountains with no climbing gear, no maps. I mean, it was just, it's an incredible story. We read it for to kind of glean some leadership principles, but in the end, we kind of said, you know, this is more of a survival story. There are leadership principles, but I think local government is kind of a survival story. So I think we can learn some things. But the main point, I think, out of this is that what got them through this mission or this whole endeavor was this intense focus on their mission, which was to get all the crew home alive. And they got everybody, 27 men, home alive, which is just incredible to think. But I really think that as we go through these really difficult things as a city, that if we continue to hone in on what we're doing, why it's important, make every decision that we make based on the core value, the core mission that we have, which is to make life better. And if something we're making a decision about isn't going to make life better for our either current or future residents, then we're probably not on the right course. So I think that mission statement is our true north. So hopefully, that's not too soapboxy. But I had to say this one thing. Up in the right corner there, Josh sent this to me the other day, texted to me, but this is the actual job ad that, so Ernest Shackleton was the captain of this voyage, and he put out a want ad, basically, in the London Times or whatever. And it said, "Men wanted for hazardous journey, small wages, bitter cold, long months of complete darkness, constant danger, safe return doubtful, honor and recognition in case of success." So, you know, sign me up. Boy, that sounds, but it kind of sounds like a job wanted ad for City Council, too. I mean, long nights, you know, limited pay, people hate you, you might get your house eggs. But I think, again, that mission statement is important. I think that's important to think about every time we get into strategic priorities. So with that, we're gonna talk about, again, what we did last February. Again, we have three documents existing that kind of cover strategic principles and priorities. And that is our budget, budget mission and objectives that we've had for many, many years, our Kaysville Strategic Plan, which the city put together in 2020, and our Kaysville General Plan, which was last updated in 2022. And each of these has different principles. And as you recall, we broke up our, you know, council and department heads into three groups, and you reviewed these plans, and you kind of picked out different principles that you thought resonated with the city at this time for the next, you know, coming years. And so in the yellow, those are the principles that we picked out last February. So that, you know, it says B1 through 3, those are our budget mission and objectives. The SP1 through 5, those are strategic planning. And then the GP1 through 5, those are the general plan. And so again, the yellow three are the ones that were picked out last February. And all three of the groups, the breakout groups, picked that first one, SP1, which is infrastructure, maintain quality, long-lasting infrastructure and connectivity. Everyone saw that as an important thing that we should be focusing on right now. And then two of the three groups picked out SP3 up in the upper right there that says, "Make decisions based on information, facts, and analysis. Data-driven decision-making is important," that many people feel. And then the last two of the three groups also picked, "Enriching our city center and downtown is an important thing we should be focusing on right now." And then the department heads, like I said, got together on September 10th. We reviewed all of these, this input from February. The one thing the department has wanted to add to this list was employees. As you can see, the budget mission objectives, number two, is about employees developing and maintaining competent, qualified, dedicated employees, well-trained. So really, we think those four things are priorities that we think will help the city. It ties to our mission statement. It helps us, you know, provide a quality of life to our current and future residents. And that's what we're gonna kind of dive into a little bit tonight. And I know we're kind of short on time and probably already running a little bit too long here, but these are some of the key things that the breakout groups last February picked out of the infrastructure priority. A lot of people felt like infrastructure had to do with quality and sustainability. You know, when we do things, are we doing them that, you know, in a way that's gonna make them last and it's sustainable? Are we investing into our infrastructure in a way that's gonna, you know, protect not only our current residents, but our residents, you know, 10, 20 years from now? Do we have a plan? Planning was a key thing that a lot of people mentioned in their breakout groups. And I think this idea of planning and sustainability, quality, infrastructure image was part of it as well. You know, are we making things so they look nice, you know, that we're taking pride in our community? But that's a lot of what we're talking about tonight when we get into, hey, what is our plan for our fire station? What are we gonna do with this library building that's been sitting empty for almost a decade? You know, things like that. So some of the points that were brought out of strategic planning priority, number three, data-driven decisions, a lot of people felt like this had a lot to do with, we need to have data presented to the council, a recommendation, you know, give us clear information that we can base decisions on. What does the flow of information look like from department heads to council, through the city manager to council? You know, a lot was said about, we should have more work sessions like this so that we can share this information, talk about it, understand it. And so again, that's kind of what we're doing tonight. And then a lot about planning and modeling, and we're trying to do more of that. You know, we've, last year, we implemented this new Waterworth modeling system that helps us plan out our future capital costs for the power infrastructure, for the water infrastructure. And we can expand that into streets and other things. And Josh, right now, is in Public Works, are working on a master streets plan that'll be ready sometime next year. And that'll help us kind of figure out, all right, what's the course look like, you know, to maintain our streets throughout the city at an acceptable level? And what does that cost us? What should we be doing now to make sure we're investing in a way that's gonna take care of us? And so we're working on this priority. And then the last of the three that were picked out last February was enriching the downtown. And it seemed like, as you look at the input that the different groups gave last February, there was a lot said, not just about downtown, but sort of the city in general, you know, all the city gateways should be welcoming and, you know, nice looking. I mean, there's, people take pride in the city, they want things to look nice. So when we're talking about, hey, what can we do to make, you know, the I-15, 200 North interchange look better? And the different gateways into the city, the 950 North, the new 950 North exit off of West Davis Corridor? And those are things that we're working on. We'll get into some of those things in the coming months. But those are actively being worked on. Of course, the library is a key part of the downtown area, and that's, we're gonna, we're obviously gonna talk about that tonight. The small area plan, as many of you know, is being worked on for the downtown area. So that's basically where we're at right now. From here, we kind of want to jump into these major priorities. If success tonight for me would look like, hey, we kind of have a pretty good idea that everyone's on board with where we're going with these major priorities, like the fire station, the operation center, and the library building. And so with that, I'm gonna turn the time over to Chief, and he's got his own PowerPoint that looks way prettier than mine.
Not me. Everybody in this room knows that.
Good job, Ariel. Ariel is pretty good.
Cheers.
And how do you do this, like a presentation mode?
You can't because it's PDF.
Okay. All right. So with that, oops, I'm sure there's a better way I could do this.
So those of you not familiar with 1710, it's our response standard. It's really the major, if you can scroll up just a little bit, I think clicking on this link, there's a link down here.
Oh, yes.
If you click on that link, I think it will help explain things a little bit better.
It's not me on the P. No, thanks.
You need silence.
And hold on, I'm gonna put my microphone up to it.
Okay.
And hold on.
Chief, I've already seen this one.
Hi.
I've already seen this movie.
Yes, you have. Some people haven't.
Okay, okay.
You may have heard about NFPA 1710, the industry standard for career fire departments. But what is it? And what does it mean for our community? Your house is on fire. It's your worst night. In just three minutes, a fire can grow 16 times larger than when it started, and it continues to grow bigger and faster every second. Once the clock starts ticking, there's a shrinking window of opportunity to save lives and property. You want a full crew of firefighters to put it out quickly, or you may suffer a catastrophic loss. But how many are enough? 50? 20? 40? How do you decide? Fortunately, there's an internationally recognized industry standard. It's called NFPA 1710, and it's based on scientific evidence and research that establishes how many firefighters are needed to put out each fire and rescue anyone trapped. At a fire scene, you want a firefighter doing every job that needs to be done to save you and your house. And at a fire, there's a lot that needs to be done, like stretching the hose, hooking to a hydrant, searching for trapped people, venting the hot gases, and much more. For a low-hazard, single-family house fire, NFPA 1710 specifies a minimum of 15 firefighters dispatched in the initial alarm. At an open-air script shopping center or garden apartment fire, the standard specifies a minimum of 28 firefighters dispatched in the first alarm. And for fires in high-rise buildings at least seven stories tall, the data show that the initial dispatch should be for a minimum of 43 firefighters, and that fire department should send additional firefighters to situations that are beyond the capability of the initial alarm. Regardless of the type of property, 1710 also sets the time of arrival on scene within four minutes for the first engine with four firefighters. The 1710 standard for both response time and crew size is based on scientific evidence, not opinion. The National Institute of Standards and Technology, known as NIST, and its partners, conducted extensive research to document the optimal crew sizes for various types As a decision-maker, you and firefighters share a common goal: everyone gets out alive. So when a house is on fire, just remember, it takes a minimum of 15 firefighters to put it out. And the quicker the response time, the better the outcome for everyone. For more information, talk to your local firefighters. Thanks for listening, and stay safe.
For those of you who've already seen it, thanks for bearing through that. The rest of that slide, the rest of that slide shows the times. When I talk about these times, it's also call-receiving time, turnout time, if you will, to get in your gear, and then your travel distance time. So all those together are your accurate times. So as you can see to the far right there, we have six minutes to get in this call, and 6:20 on the West Side. Eh, we'll get there about 12 minutes to the west. So a little constraints there. We went on that Leighton fire, that apartment fire a few weeks ago, and there was 48 firefighters on scene at that fire initially. And then when you start swapping people out, because really, a firefighter, yeah, we, most of our guys and gals are in really good shape. You know, we have some work to do in a couple areas, but, you know, they get out the door as fast as they can, they work very hard. But still, your average time in a working structural fire is about 12 to 15 minutes. And then I gotta swap you out and put somebody else in. So that makes it a little more challenging. Next page, please. Any questions?
Sorry, I didn't mean to laugh, but, sorry.
What?
Because it's not funny. You just said, "Any questions?" About we're failing to meet standards.
Yeah, we're failing.
So, yeah, this makes it a little tougher as well. Just so happen, we do own the land over on Offburton, and we thought about putting it where, this is for you, Josh, we thought about putting it over by the church on 200 North. What's that one?
Westgate, over Perry.
Oh, Bonneville.
Bonneville.
Oh.
And that pretty much got shot down, but it actually worked out better for land that we already own. So we'll be compliant in four zones on the West Side in lieu of just one zone if we would have went over there by the church. So it actually enhances us and works out better. So right now, we're not compliant, we're 60% of our calls. So six out of every 10 calls, we'll be there on time. Next one, please.
But if you, but you're saying if the station were at that location, you'd be.
It would help out those times, for sure.
Up to 90, or were you?
You know, the first year, it would be kind of, you know, you gotta work with them, too. Because it's all about, you know, get out the door, you know? So we're at fault, too, by not getting out the door as fast as we should be getting out the door. You get complacent on some calls. We go to Mutton Hollow all the time, you know, we're there quite a bit at the apartment complex. You get complacent, right? The call comes in, you're like, ah, you know, I'm gonna finish going to the bathroom, or I'm gonna, you know, grab this drink or whatever. So that kind of stuff's gotta stop, and we've worked on that as well. It's all about getting out the door. It really is.
So if we had that West Side station, we would increase our call time response by?
Yes.
Well, obviously, we'd increase it by how much? Do you know?
You know, I'd say, to be honest with you, I'd say we'd be in the 80s. But we fail sometimes even on our East Side. And we have a station right here, but we're also getting double and triple tapped. You know, we just, we got hit so many times today. We have eight on duty, and we still got triple hit a few times today.
Does that mean, like, you have?
We have a call, and another call, and another call. And we waved off Leighton. You know, you have mutual aid for those reasons, but you don't subsidize another city to cover you. You pave your own way. On that point, Mike has talked with Farmington, some of you have heard this, but Mike's talked to Farmington, and the numbers were about right. And they came back and said they gotta fix their problem.
They did? You said it, yeah. Good job, Mike.
It, yeah, if you did not hear that, sorry.
That's awesome, Mike.
Because you guys are responding to calls in Farmington.
We have been the Farmington and Fruit Heights.
Essentially, the same amount that they lost with Fruit Heights.
We have been, I just got the numbers. We have been the Farmington and Fruit Heights over 300 times so far this year. And we have been, and this is what it's supposed to be, and bear with me. Farmington gave us aid 38 times so far this year, and we've been into them over 300 times. Aid given to Leighton, we gave to Leighton 41 times so far this year, they've given us 69 times. And really, the main reason for that, and this isn't a bash on Farmington, so please, I don't, I don't need this to be a Farmington bash. But really, if Farmington had the staffing, they would relieve some of that load that Leighton's doing. But we've had, we've had battalion chiefs coming from Syracuse because 177 gives them that shot. You know, so it's worked out a little beneficial, but you can't hang your hat on mutual aid. They got a city to run, too. Just like if they get a, if Farmington gets a call for a commercial fire alarm, which you really bring the house, because it's a commercial structure, we're not dumping our house for that. You gotta work it out. Bring somebody up from Sal salt Lake, you know, bring them up from, or North Salt Lake, rather, let Bonneville eat that a little bit, whatever that looks like. So is there any questions on that? So for situations like that. Yes. Who makes those calls? I always say, we don't dump our stuff to go to run. Is there an overall dispatch? That's where you would have it if you had, like, a district, someone there to dispatch would make those decisions. Well, dispatch don't make the decisions. Okay. Well, I guess they do, Perry. We, as chiefs, give them what we want our stacks to be. A stack is, okay, we have a structural fire in Kaysville, who do you want going? Kaysville, this, 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 Farmington, this, this, Leighton, this, this, that. And then they'll be in a stack. So it's decided by us chiefs. So all eight of us in this county go, all right, this is what we're gonna do. And it's pretty uniform. For instance, we're one of the few, we don't send two chief officers like you're supposed to on a fire, because if I'm out of town, we don't have one. So.
Other departments do send.
What was that?
Other departments send.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, I get on Cook a lot. Jason Cook, he's a friend of mine, he's a battalion chief, been at Leighton for 30 years. But he lives on our border, so I always tell the chief of Leighton, I go, I have a B.C., man, it's Jason. Because, like I said, he lives there, and they have take-home vehicles and stuff. So he comes, he knows our situation, and he comes into our city and helps out. Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Don't go to, yeah, that's gonna be the one they probably want to see. Councilmember Blackman, myself, mainly, mainly Mike, thanks. Put these numbers together based on what he knows and current costs, and they're not pretty.
And they're not just picked out of the air, they're verified by Leighton's current, brand-new station they just built? And the architect.
Syracuse. And it's the construction costs that have skyrocketed throughout on almost everything. It's, you know, Perry, it's not just the construction cost. It is, it is materials. It really is. Well, and I include that in the construction costs, yeah. When all said and done, talking to Chief Byington at Syracuse, they paid about $650 a square foot, when it was all said and done. Furnish it, blah, 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 blah. When we built the station here, Mikey, you correct me if I'm wrong, when we built the station here 25 years ago, the bays were $200 a square foot, and then the living quarters and the admin areas was 250. So that's the pricing difference, for sure. And then Jason, if you look at projecting costs for 2027, Jason put that in for some Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not, Syracuse started out, it was about 9 million, and when all said and done, when it was built, it came out to about 11.3, 11.4. That sucks. That just finished last year, right? It did.
Yeah, it just barely did.
And the reason why we're showing this and to include the next slide was staffing. And there again, I'm not into bashing other cities. What they do is what they do, and I live in Syracuse. But they did not, they did not put in for the manpower to staff that station. So they took from Peter to pay Paul a little bit over at Station 32, and they're running lean in Station 32. So that's the downside of, I know, I know staffing's the gift that keeps on giving, I get it. But we also have to, you either do it or you don't do it.
Are you saying they didn't hire enough to fill it, or they didn't build enough space to put enough?
No, they have plenty of space. They chose not to move on their staff.
They just built the building and.
Hoping that they could staff it.
So I think, I think they're running five out of there, and it houses like eight or nine.
Just waiting for Costco.
Five firefighters or five crews?
Five firefighters. Yeah, and they're cross-staffing. They run their medics out of there. So if they get a medic call and that house is empty, then they're, they don't have anything on that side.
I think the Station 81 that Murray built in 20, I think they finished it in '21, and it was 7 million. So geez.
Well, I've been here eight years. Mike and I ran the numbers, spring of 2018, it was 3.2.
Yeah, yep.
That's simple math.
I got, I got that square footage's cost actually right from the architect that did Syracuse.
Is that their actual construction cost, or is the engineer assessing it?
Oh, that's their actual cost when they came in, because the station was about done by time, so he was able to give me all their current budget numbers.
And if you, and obviously, if we decide to go forward, move on, Mike, we're just gonna have to do this again in spring, just to try and get the most accurate numbers we can get?
Yeah, because we technically really haven't even done a needs assessment. Yeah, cause we technically really haven't even done a needs assessment for the buildings, so they can.
Yeah, for sure.
Do the square footage.
They don't need anything.
But you know, anything less than that would be great.
Are the dogs in there?
Also, I have a question as far as building it and then staffing it and wrapping up. You're just saying if there's no point in building it if you can't fully staff it from the, from day one. Is that what you're saying?
I, yeah.
There's no advantage to building it and then.
I mean, I, you can, whatever.
I mean, that's a question I have right now. How many people do you have in your current station during the day?
Eight.
Eight. So you couldn't split it four and four? I mean, I'm just asking, would that?
It's not, it's not feasible. I, you know, it's just like you said that one time at, at city council. I'm not using your words against you.
No, I said.
But I guess I am. Um, you know, when we wanted to go forward with three and you're like, man, three gives you nothing. And Andre goes, well, give them six then. Same principle. I mean, we're still, we're still gonna run short, right? And we're still getting double tapped and triple tapped. And we've already taken this risk for so long. It's just how long do you wanna take it? That, that's, that's.
You and Chief Oberg are just expensive insurance policies.
You absolutely right. I was just, you've heard me say it, Perry.
I, I, that's, and I love the analogy because it's exactly right.
That's exactly what we are.
And we rolled it, and we rolled the dice on this each of the four years that I've been on council.
Yes, sir.
You know, so I should have gone to Vegas.
Could have brought back enough money to build it.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Uh, there's the staffing for the personnel. These are all top end. So if you look at the bottom of the screen there, um, if they stayed status quo, just with raises and stuff every year, merit, whatever. Uh, it would take them about eight years to get to this top end.
And by then the top ends increased to.
Well, sure it has. Absolutely.
That's what you would plan on, yeah.
So it's, you know, that's, like I said. Benefits were a little bit higher. Uh, Marin, what is it? Three, 34 points, something. So benefits at 35%.
Chief.
Yeah. You say something, John?
I said cheese.
I think you just said cheese.
Oh.
I said chief. Next slide, chief?
Yeah, sure. I, anybody, I mean, I guess there's, yeah, really, really the question is, do we wanna move forward and put it on the ballot? Cause here's the price tags. There's really, it's.
Well, you know, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn or anything, but I'd be really nervous about putting it on the ballot yet. Just because of the fact that the tax increase didn't pass. So next year we're gonna do the tax increase and it's gonna have that gym on it, basically. So you're gonna hear a lot of stuff about the gym, cause there's a bond that we're gonna have to pay, which is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of probably around seven, $800,000 a year. If it's a $10 million bond, probably somewhere in that neighborhood. And uh, so if you put it on a geo bond next year, uh, I'm afraid it would fail.
I do have a question though. So if it's on the ballot, it doesn't mean it's gonna be built immediately, right? So, so I guess how much time do you need in order to have it on the ballot and then actually start construction, engineering, those things? Do you have a couple of years or do, if it's on the ballot next year, does that mean we have to start the project the following year?
Like construction, earliest construction would start would be two years from now if, right, chief? If you put this on the ballot next November, assuming that it got passed, then it'd be about a year before you went through all the engineering and designs.
So we wouldn't actually take that bond?
So two and a half years maybe?
Before they actually bond for it, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know what that, what does that look like from your position?
Depends on if you're gonna draw the bond for design and engineering and all that, or if you're gonna. So if you need that, those finance, finances for all that work, the engineering and everything, then you need to bond for it sooner rather than later.
Right, so Marin, is there a time, is, is there a time, like a time band? So if it passes in November next year, do we only have a year to, to execute bond, make a decision? Or is it just, okay, yeah, our community said that they want this and, and the bond question is in the next three to five years? Or do we have to, does it have to follow it immediately? I guess is what I'm asking.
I think this is a good uh, bond attorney question, but.
Okay, I don't know.
That, so the bond attorneys draft that language and I believe they can draft it in different ways.
Yeah.
Um, typically they would say, you know, are you voting to increase your property tax to support this geo bond? Um, effective this date, you know, this is when the tax increase would happen. And typically that tax increase happens right after the, the geo bond gets approved.
Okay.
I mean, we would start collecting that money. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to bond right away, but we'd start building up a reserve. And even if we decided, you know, let's not start bonding until a year, we'd have some money set aside or that would start coming in to help, you know, pay off that bond. So the big question, like chief said, is here's the plan. How do we pay for it? Do the residents, you know, are they gonna support that? And that's the, that's the $16 million question.
I'm not backing out of this, but these are not my slides and this is Marin's wheelhouse, not mine.
Yeah, that, so.
She has it from here.
We, Marin and I met with uh, Zion's Public Finance. They're the ones that, they're the, you know, the consulting firm that helps cities through these things. Um, and these are the numbers that they crunched. We said, hey, if, if we've got a $16 million station that we need to build and it's gonna cost $2 million to operate it. What does that look like in terms of impact to the average resident? And sorry, those are so small, but um, in a nutshell, uh. Let me back up. First of all, going back to what chief said about Syracuse. If we just put this on the ballot, does, do you support a 16, $16 million station and don't say anything about the personnel? I think we're not being completely transparent with voters. We need to show them upfront that this includes the station, but also is gonna have a cost to staff it. And so in talking to Zion's, there's a way to put that on the ballot so that they're seeing, okay, question number one, do you support the geo bond for $16 million? And then another paragraph would be in there that would say, by the way, the cost to staff this is gonna be maybe around $2 million. And so when they say yes, they understand the full package that, that we're getting into here. And so they broke it down. Um, the average house value in uh, Kaysville is $690,000. So you can see the annual impact there in bold where it says annual home or average home. $114 a year, um, for the $16 million geo bond. And then even more than that is the average home impact for the $2 million a year to staff it, which is 195. So together, we're talking about a $310 annual impact to the average homeowner to build and staff the station. So that's what would be on the ballot for residents to decide, is this worth it or not? Um, the city doesn't go out and promote this or, or, you know, campaign for it. Um, we provide the information and let voters decide, so that's how it will work. We, part of this will involve an education campaign where we explain here, here's why we're doing this, you know? Here's the NFPA standards. Here's why it's important. But in the end, obviously it's the voters that will decide, is this something they're gonna approve or not approve? So that's the sticker shock or whatever you wanna call it. Any, any questions other than obviously it, very big number?
I think, I think the first question, obviously we know we need this, right? I guess my question would be, does it need to be next year or we've already made a commitment this year that we're gonna have to fulfill next year? Which is the gym. We've already decided as a council that we are gonna fund that. So that means we're already gonna have to do what we plan to do or at least, you know, pay for that. So.
But not all of the increase was for the gym, right?
Right, exactly. Right. It wasn't all for the gym for sure, for sure. But I'm just wondering. When do we actually need this? And we don't know for sure. I know it's just a gamble. It's, do we need this in five years? Do we need this in three years?
Is Farmington's key station gonna change the numbers at all?
Actually, it's, it's gonna change our numbers. We're gonna be in the Farmington and Fruit Heights more. Because they're moving to the west and they're not gonna staff station 71.
They're not staffing?
They're, they're gonna wait a few years to staff it. They're gonna, they're gonna move to their new station.
Problem then.
I, I understand, but it becomes my problem.
Well, can we get, if we get Fruit Heights back, does that cover some of this nut?
I know you don't want it.
No, no, no. It's, seriously, John?
I know.
I don't ever care, man.
I know.
I mean, I, you tell me where to go, we'll go.
Well, and you're going there anyway.
Yeah, I, yeah.
That's been my point is we're going there anyway. May as well get paid for it.
Well, then that's part of the Farmington numbers right now.
That's part of their, yeah, that's part of what's causing the problem.
For 600, like the numbers, yeah.
Well, did Farmington sell some property or something to fund theirs? Do we have any sneaky shenanigans we can pull?
That's why it's only gonna, I say only, because it's a lot of money. But yeah, they sold it for like 10 million in their, their station 16.
Yeah, they did sell some property.
So they're, they're gonna use 6 million, however they fund that. I have no idea.
And yeah, could we do that? We could do that. We have.
When does the police station bond?
31, 31.
I'm just saying, we, we, we have, I mean, yeah, we have.
I honestly believe if you put that, that fire station on the bond, this, this is my, my speaking, you know, as a council. I feel like you put it on the ballot this year, you, it will fail and you won't be able to bring it back for a lo, a while.
Well, what's the rule on that? I don't think this is actually.
They're not a rule, but you're, you're gonna. The public clamor, you, you. It will fail because there, the word is gonna come, the gym is gonna be, we're gonna have to pay for that. That's already a three or $400 a year increase on taxpayers in Kaysville city right now. And you're talking with this, you're talking $700 increase, $800 increase. So you put it on the ballot this year with that, I, my feeling is it will guaranteed lead.
I don't think it's about $100.
It will, your numbers, the numbers we were going with before was about $300.
Yeah, sure. It depends on the problem.
Some of our houses, yes. You're right.
Yeah.
We will be paying a lot of money.
You're saying.
I already paid a lot of money for everything.
It depends on a lot of factors, of course, and it, and also are we gonna do a 20-year bond, a 25-year bond, 15-year? I think we had, had it around $30 a year for the average owner.
Well, I.
For the gym portion.
That's right. It's like 32 for the year, for the whole year, $30.
Yes.
I just don't think we can say that number out loud enough because we were, yeah, we were doing half ramp, half general.
That's, that's just the gym, but that wasn't including the tax increase.
But not all of the tax increase.
Well, and let's see, what, what's number two on the agenda? Ops center, right? Which.
Actually, that's the number.
Which I, I almost needs to be discussed before we, then we return back. Cause you know, it goes down to what's, what's your priority as a city?
So, so thoughts on this, I, I think you're right, um, Councilman Blackman, that this is gonna be very difficult to, for voters, voters to pass that, that number. Um, I think there's value in putting that out there, those information. Uh, I've seen so many cities put out a geo bond and then it fails and then three years later they put it out again and it passes. And I think it just, it's this period of education for people to warm up to it. It doesn't necessarily pass the first ask for the second. It's like, you know, asking my wife to marry me. Uh, ask her first time, no way. Second, oh, thinking about it, then you know, finally, you know, I get the yes, but it, I think there is a period where.
Those are terrible now.
It's first from the kind of mine.
Apparently it worked though.
But it worked. Uh, uh, but I think it, there is a warm-up period. Sometimes it takes years to get that, you know? That out there and let people kind of stew on it, think about it. Um, you know, we talk about it and it takes us months and months to kinda wrap our head around it. The average resident who lives a busy life, it takes I think years sometimes to fully get that through and yeah, we need this. And, and, and kind of emotionally get to that point like, okay, we're ready to pull the trigger.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
That, that, that might be a strategy. I mean, you know, maybe it passes the first time, maybe it doesn't. The other thing is for the, to the point of, we've got all these other things. I, I fear that if we piecemeal it out, somebody might say, well, wait a minute. First you asked me, you know, the gym museum, then you came and you asked about this library building and then two years later you asked about. Don't tell us everything at once. Like we wanna see everything at once. Be transparent about it. Don't come back and say, oh, by the way, there's this and oh, by the way, there's this. Just put it all out there as ugly and as high, as expensive as it is and, and let the residents sort of stew on it. And ultimately you can do that, I guess, but it's kinda like when they first came out with the ops center down there and said it was $33 million. I mean, it hit everybody so hard and turned them off so much. It's like the ops center just went away. And, and I'm just afraid if you hit all these ta, these taxpayers out there telling them this is what's, you're gonna be paying for. And you start putting them on the bonds, they're, they're gonna vote down everything. I think we're not a huge city. We can only do so many big projects at once. And you know, we're, we're, we're doing the gym day. That's a big project and we're still paying for a police station. And we're getting to work on a, a city shops. You know, you gotta be careful about what you throw out there at these people or they're just gonna say, this is why they don't trust their government. This is why they've made it so tough to raise your taxes.
I, I do, I do agree with what you're saying, but I do also agree with, as a resident, I would like to know what are the big things coming up? So that in my mind, I can sort of start wrapping my head around it. So to your point, maybe we don't put it on this next year, but we start talking about it, cause we need, people ask me all the time. When are we gonna get a fire station over here? And I keep telling them, we're doing okay, but yeah, we're, we're getting there. We're gonna have to do this. And so I think that we need to have the conversation so people know this is in our five-year plan or 10-year plan. And at some point, we need to make a decision about it.
I've been thinking about, one of the things that we talked about in our group was that we don't do a good job of getting the word out of information about the city. We used to think like Facebook or this or that. Mailers, if, if I see like just a letter and it's got a Kaysville, you know.
They're too long.
Yeah, and that's the, but if something came like a flyer that said Kaysville Fire Station info, you know, like a.
Like a pamphlet.
A pamphlet.
Well, that's what we sent out when we did paramedic service in 2021.
Yeah.
And people, I think most people read.
I don't know. I, I think people were okay with it anyway.
Yeah.
I think they were definitely okay with it.
But just kinda the same thing that, you know, that you've sent out as a, as a, uh, when you're running for election or something like it's.
Yeah.
It's, you read it from, you don't have to open a letter or anything like that. And I don't know, it just might be a good idea to send something out like that that says, you know, looking forward, here's some of the things and how much they would cost.
Well, if you, if you look at, and Jason, can you go to the next slide? They actually, Zion's gave us a timeline for everything on what to do and pretty much what you're talking about, John.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm just saying like to Mike's point and to Mayor's point of, of beginning, getting people to start. To get a palette for it. I think that that's gonna be the important thing. I mean, it's the same thing with truth and taxation. Almost nobody understands truth and taxation.
Sure.
Um, you know, if something came out that was, you know, pretty easy to just glance at and read and maybe look at how it works. I think that more people would be likely to read it and so, um, yeah, sending something out that doesn't look like a.
Form letter, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, really we don't have to do anything but educate, uh, the community, educate our residents. And we don't have any triggers to pull until August 20th.
Right.
So that's something to think about.
Uh, you know, maybe we could, I'm, I'm a big fan of QR codes. Maybe on that thing, there's a QR code that says, you know, post your opinion. You know, and then, and then we would get some really good data. I mean, people click on the QR code and answer a five, five-question survey about, so what do you think? Do you think this is something you'd wanna see on the ballot? Is this something you would pay for? Is this something you're concerned about? Whatever the five questions are that you're gonna ask.
With some actual numbers.
And then we would get some actual numbers, yeah, like a little bit of a pre, huh?
Exactly.
Send the slides.
Just in a.
No, well, you could, yeah, yeah, you could have the slides. The QR code could pull up some of those slides and show like the video or whatever and something like that. But you can't be too long. It's gotta be fast. You gotta have da, 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 da.
I don't think people will say no to the fire station, but I do understand they're gonna say, wait, what? This is a lot. Because this year did not happen, cause we were going to plan it out and we did plan it out and then we weren't able to execute the plan because of the tax law changes. But.
Yeah, question. Do you live on the west side? Would you care if the firefighters were eight minutes later so that you don't have to pay this?
Depends on three years or might operate.
I like what Mike brought up.
Call, call the appreciation that's coming to get him.
So probably five or six years.
So probably five or six years ago, Ogden City did some surveys with their residents because they could not hire police officers. And they really did kind of hone down those questions, John, to things like what you were saying. To really try and help the residents under, understand, one, what the consequences were and consequences could be anything from your property taxes are increasing to you don't get an officer to respond to your vehicle burglar, your vehicle break-in for forty-eight hours. So that, that could be a model to look at to see how we would want to phrase something. But the work the Ogden City did led to them to be able to increase wages and try and get some of their, their police stuff figured out.
Well, I like that input and I like what John said about gathering data. And I hadn't thought about what Mike brought up about, you know, people having kind of sticker shock. And I, I think that's a valid concern. I've had enough residents reach out to me about the fire station or bring it up in, you know, conversations that I think has pretty broad support, but I wouldn't wanna go just off of that, which is why I like John's idea. But I, I think the only way to get a real sense of what everyone in Kaysville wants is to put on the ballot. So I, and, and this is one of the things and, and, you know, Chief knows, that's bothered me for a while. So I am okay, I think it would be good if we put it on the ballot this year, even though we've got a lot of stuff going on. It's one of those public safety things where I think we've kicked it down the road enough that I think I'm not comfortable kicking it down.
And if it doesn't pass, I, I really think it probably still would pass, but if, if it doesn't pass, like you said.
I've been through that experience once before here and it didn't even come close.
Well, a fire station.
For a fire station?
It was for a police station.
For the police station.
Well, yeah, yeah, but that was, that was fifteen years ago.
Dude, we are much more like Chief and Stormy and I, we're short.
That was a long, that was fifteen years ago. And, and I, and I remember, that was brutal, yeah, sure. So, so, and the problem was the question.
But, but you do understand that you will be putting this out at the same time because you're gonna have to redo your whole tax increase.
I think if you do the education, people will get on board. Cause I've talked to people about the police station and they're like, they shouldn't have. And I'm like, well, actually, they were storing like specimens in the fridge with their lunches and they were like, oh. I guess it's okay after all, like, I think if we educate people.
Prefer that it passed, not fail, and I don't think it will pass.
I'm, I'm with, I'm with Abby though on that, Mike, I, I really am. But, and, and part of me, part of me is with you though, because I've said that to our folks. I, I go, I just don't know if our citizens will have the appetite. Cause my guys, guys and gals come to me daily. Every response they go on that west side, every single time they are talked to about a west side fire station. But I don't wanna use that as a measuring stick. Because you gotta go by political environment, you gotta go with what's going on in our nation. And, hell, man, we can't feed people.
Well, put it on the ballot.
Well, what if we?
Put it on the ballot and we'll see.
What, what if we take this next year?
You know.
It's not like we're at a blackjack table.
What if we put it on the ballot next, not this year, in twenty twenty-six? Twenty twenty-seven, but we talked about it a lot in twenty twenty-six. We educate people, we have a public information campaign.
Well, man, that's what I'm saying, we can do that campaign and we, we don't have to put it on the ballot. We don't have to pull any trigger until August twentieth.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying for the ballot for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
Chief, you understand that August twentieth is, that date is because that's the same date we'll also be holding the public hearing for truth and taxation.
I, I would imagine.
That's what it is, that's what that date is.
Cause I, cause I do, I do agree with the sticker shock of it, I do agree. So I think if we take a year, put a lot of thought, effort this year, the rest of next year, and then we have it on the ballot for twenty twenty-seven, I think it would have even more support than it would have next year. And hopefully by then the economy is a little bit more stable for people, I don't know if it will be.
You can probably have that same argument, it's like, hey, man, you already hit me last year, now you're gonna hit me again?
Well, people are gonna think that, they're gonna think they got hit twice, even though we didn't hit them twice. Right, there were, there were things going around saying, we did hit them. This year, we're gonna hit them again next year. That was not the case, but that's what was talked about, because you can't, it's hard to, it's hard to help people understand that things change, so.
Well, and that'll, and that'll be, that'll be a fun marketing challenge for the, for the cap for the city.
Yeah.
To be able to put out, but we, we try and this is not a double.
Yes, because people are gonna assume that it will be. So that does make it harder, so would you guys be okay with that? Would you be okay with that? We said.
Well, to be honest with you, man, I just give you the information of what I feel in my professional opinion this city needs.
It's necessary, I know.
And it's, it's all about what you, but you decide.
How, how many people are you talking staffing with, twelve?
Well, we'd hire three battalion chiefs too, so we'd hire fifteen more people.
Fifteen, okay, so that's the two million dollars.
That's a two million.
You, you understand that the yearly cost of the two million for the staffing is more than the bond will be.
Yeah.
So that's not even, we're not even talking that part of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's why I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you, let's take a year and a half, let's really communicate it.
That's, that's why the increase was higher on the right side of the.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, I'm just, you, you were talking, talking about the bond.
I had to do a double take until I.
But the bond, but the bond's not even taken into consideration that the cost of this staffing will be more than the payment of the bond.
Yes.
You're not even including that.
About a thousand dollars a year for.
Yes, forever.
Yeah.
And, but I think as long as people know, our residents know, we are having these discussions, we are thinking about this, we're planning about this and we can communicate that, I think that will help people to be more comfortable, you know, and get more input on it. And, and we can also tell them what we've studied and researched as far as districting and have those conversations. It just gives us an opportunity to truly communicate all the due diligence we're doing and we've done, and it won't be so brutal.
Education definitely is the hardest thing that we do.
What do you think, Perry? Sorry, Jason.
My, my thing is, in fact, Melinda, he goes, and, and we're talking about saving a library? Spending any money to do that? It's asinine, I'm sorry. It's, I mean, it's a whole different topic. It's a whole different topic, however.
No, I, I, yes, exactly. And is there both on the bond, I mean, are both, yes, Jason's gotta keep going here, so.
Yeah, big, I think that's important, that whatever we do time-wise, that we don't do it piecemeal. Like if we're gonna do a geo-bond for the library and this station, let's do them together so people understand. Otherwise, people are gonna see one thing and then they're gonna see the second thing, why didn't you tell me about this one last year?
Yes.
But I think this might be a good time to move on to the next thing and maybe we can circle back to all these things.
Because no horse is too dead to beat, right?
Yes.
Too dead to what?
Too dead to beat.
Yikes.
You'll miss me.
Remember Josh, you signed up for this. Some deep thoughts here.
All right, so. Operation Center, okay, this is the one, another big one, obviously we've been talking about. I, I think you all heard this before, but the Operation Center was built in nineteen ninety-one, so it's, you know, over three decades old. It's just in need of some repair, updates, we've outgrown it. The city is growing two and a half times from fourteen thousand to thirty-four thousand since it was originally built and our operations have grown, obviously. There's a need for additional office space. Currently, we've got people spread out into, well, we'll get into that, that, for a conference room every time Public Works or somebody needs to come up and have a meeting, they're, they're driving over to City Hall to have the meeting. They don't have their own conference room, don't have a public lobby, really, need some improvements to just everything, basically. And then one thing that's really beyond our control right now is the Fuel Island that all of the city vehicles use for, for fueling up is out of compliance and the state's come in, issued a letter to us, the environment, environmental quality has given us until July first of twenty twenty-six. They've given us a six-month extension to January first, twenty twenty-seven, but come January twenty-seven, they're gonna shut us down and we'll be gassing up at Maverick. So we've gotta do that regardless if we're gonna continue to have our own Fuel Island. Another part of this project is to provide covered storage. Right now, we just have an open yard, everything sitting out, just kind of in the elements, rusting over. And it'd be good to have some, some covered storage for some of these expensive pieces of equipment. As you might recall, the, the original cost when we were doing this, a different style of project with a much different approach was gonna be about thirty-nine million dollars and that, that was twenty twenty-four dollars. So it's well over forty million dollars in, you know, in actual twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars if we went ahead and did that project. But we've, we've taken a different approach, as you might recall, and now we're down to five point four million.
And I, I think it's worth pointing out that the different approach is, hey, the original project was, the old fire station is on its last legs in being able to serve the recreation department, bring the recreation department down to the existing op center, remodeling that building so that Parks and Rec can occupy that building, giving the mechanics some additional space where they only have one bay, building a new building for Public Works and Power and all the associated improvements in the yard. And, and since with Cole's help, it, it shifted to like, all right, let's, let's start with just the Operation Center. Maybe the, the long-term goal is still that there is the ability to bring Rec down and consolidate that department in one location and free up something that can happen with the City Hall block by doing so. But the, the remodel that takes place with the existing building for the five million meets immediate needs, but also the future needs of Parks and Rec. It's not something that, like.
It's not a recent thought.
Yeah, exactly.
And Cole and Josh, do you wanna kind of explain some of the layout of the current building and, and where things are, what needs to be done?
Ken or Josh can, doesn't matter. Probably here's your point, any council member, Josh, or council member, like, relax. So here's our canvas of the op center, existing building. So the, the proposal for the expansion is, is this area right here, current building. The Fuel Island currently sits right here. A future building down the road, some years and years, the power department, uh, model is here. Our canvas currently uses this. This is the problem, the most immediate is the Fuel Island. The Fuel Island, our site plan is designed to go right here where this portal sits. This portal is again from Davis School District and it's was.
Davis School District, Mount High.
It was thirty years old, we got and it's.
It was not, it was not kosher for them to continue using at the school. And we've been.
So let's give it to both.
Yes. Public Works has employees out here, we, we made some makeshift offices up in the upstairs. Power Department's taking away storage space just to try to get employees off.
The maintenance closet is now the, the street's office.
Yeah, so it's real weird.
The one upstairs?
Square inch.
Downstairs.
Of that building we can. So, you know, we have invested in the building, it does have a good roof on it, the HVAC system has been upgraded.
New shop doors.
New shop doors.
But the thing that we lack is just space for people that we just don't, doesn't currently exist. And so we did a needs assessment, our facilities master plan back in twenty seventeen that identified that. And then in twenty twenty-two, we did a, a program assessment for the.
Does it work?
It doesn't, it doesn't show on TV screens. We did a, a program assessment in twenty twenty-two that just identified the needs of the employees that we have in the building. And so, kinda, yeah. And so that twenty twenty-two programming assessment kind of dictated the, not dictated, but helped us recognize that the special needs that we have for staff, for future growth. And so our mindset shifted, instead of, you know, focusing on a new building, well, let's focus on improving this building for the foreseeable future and then also getting us some side improvements for site storage. You know, Josh can attest, having all these plow trucks sitting out in the elements all year long, we getting rusting effects. We get rust on all of our, you know, equipment's not lasting as long. Power Department's throwing all their millions of dollar worth of transformers just.
Sitting out in the sun.
Sitting out in the sun, just baking, it's just shortening our span.
Just to give you a, a quick understanding, one of our bucket trucks, we can't store in, we can't store it in the shop, there's no room for it. So it's, it stores outside. It's, it was six years old and, and we got hit with eighty thousand dollars worth of non-complying because of the weather. The weather is constantly in, out in the sun, out in the rain, out in the weather. And in six years, it was already, we, we have to, in order to work on the power lines, it has to meet all kinds of different dielectric tests and go through all these safety standards. And it failed this last year miserably. And we have other bucket trucks that are in the shop and they are thirteen years old, so more than twice as old. And we are now just barely starting to look into replacing them because of age, they're aging. Not because they're not passing because of weather damage and rust and wear down. And that's just the difference from being able to be in the shop versus sitting out in the yard. All the plow trucks, all the equipment, everything, the departments are receiving that exact same wear, that exact same everything out there, so.
So, so that five point four project would include the adding addition of seven thousand square feet of office space, relocation of the Fuel Island and then starting the, actually including some onsite storage, covered storage for vehicles and material. And by doing that, it does delay the need for a future building for considerable years.
Ten, fifteen, how many?
I would think.
Yeah.
Say at least, at least ten.
At least ten.
At least ten, so. And, and the nice thing about this, what, what we're designing is we're still keeping this space available for that. And so all of the covered storage is being programmed where it's gonna fit for the long term.
So we would obviously bond for this, but how much would it be paid from the power company and?
That's something we have.
That's something we have, yeah.
It would be majority paid for out of enterprise funds though, because most of that use is power, water, those sorts of things. So we wouldn't list, be looking at a major truth and taxation increase for this, it'd be mostly put on enterprise funds, which means those power and water rates would be covering those bond payments. But we kind of did this crunch, so for a five point four million dollar lease revenue bond, we'd be looking at, if you assume four percent interest, twenty-year bond, that's about three hundred ninety-seven thousand a year. Again, most of that would be paid for from power and water and enterprise.
So maj, okay, majority fifty-one percent or eighty-eight?
Probably, probably closer to eighty.
Okay.
Yep, good question.
So, so you're talking three hu, three hundred thousand of it or three hundred and couple, okay.
So, so we don't really need a five point four million dollar lease revenue bond because eighty percent.
You still need the bond, but it's, it's their funds that are paying.
The payment of the bond, yeah.
Yeah. So then you're talking about a hundred thousand a year-ish, okay.
Actually, don't you think there'd be a way to eat that all up in the enterprise fund so we didn't have to get any of the general fund money?
That's, we wanna build this into the Waterworth models and just see like, all right, where, where is our future cost looking at? You know, when we look at everything and, and I think when we do that, we'll have a better idea of what that's gonna look like. But right now, we just know five point four million is our, our target number, our, you know, placeholder and it'd be around four hundred thousand a year for that bond if, if we assume those, you know, those assumptions of four percent.
You're right, Mike, you would wanna maximize what you.
I would wanna maximize the enterprise funds for something like that, because there's so many other things that you can't take those other revenue streams and put into this, convert these into that, and so it seems like.
Just to add another layer, this project has gone to fifty percent CD construction drawings. So we've gone to the fifty percent mark, we stopped, and now we're just waiting for whether we continue or whether we don't. So, so we've got plans to the fifty percent level as of May of this last year, twenty-one.
Okay, so then to me, if, if we're able to pay for this internally, why haven't, why don't we just say go?
That's what they want, they just.
That's what we're.
That, that's, we were kind of headed in that direction and then we kind of got the sticker shock of the gymnasium just went up a lot of, and then some other things, inflation in general. So we kind of pushed pause, but that's the plan for, I think we're saying, next year, come January, February, when we get into budget discussions, we're going to be recommending, let's go ahead and move forward with this lease revenue bond for the next fiscal year.
That will not require a tax increase, right? We've, we feel like we can handle this internally.
Should, shouldn't you be able to?
Shouldn't you be able to tell, sorry, I'm sorry.
It, it's, honestly, it's so early to say because there's so many moving parts of the budget. Obviously-
There is, but Jason, with the new, with the new increases we've got in power and water, wouldn't you be able to give us those costs real soon? Because you'll have a couple of months' data.
We, we will be able to, yes, we will be able to build those into the water worth models. Those models that we used last year though, they did not include the operations center. So we're, if we go in and we add the operations center, the question becomes, what, what does that do to the rates? And that's a discussion we'll have to get into, you know, come February, March next year.
That's fair.
It seems like this would be, as far as the operations of the city, this almost seems like it would jump to the highest priority. Especially where there is a new revenue stream that could possibly make that payment. And that would help, I think, the other ones.
That would be much better in terms of not having to, yeah, just use our enterprise funds that we can access now.
And again, I think, you know, obviously, we don't have enough time to get into the real nitty-gritty details tonight, but when we come back and have the work sessions next year, that's the kind of stuff we'll really be diving into. We'll be able to show you kind of how that's going to work and what that's going to do to future cost rates and things like that stuff. But that's the path we're kind of headed down right now, and just wanted to give you a heads up and just see what kind of questions are out there. This is just another look at what we're talking about doing. Cole, if you want to, or Josh, if you want to.
This is that area that Cole had kind of pointed out of expanding out to the north rather than trying to figure out a way where we can build up and adding cost there. This is, this is just turf, and I think it's a little less expensive to move out and encompass that area than it is to try and add space elsewhere.
That's a good idea, but I do think we should keep the people's cubicles and offices the way they are that are currently in that spot and make them stay in those.
Make them stay in the portable.
Bring the portable out front is what you said.
No, I'm not talking about the portable, I'm just saying like-
Just paint it and put it in the front yard.
That's, that's why you're my favorite.
I mean, it's just, those guys are bad.
John's a deep thinker.
It's so bad. They're like, I don't have a wall, so I'm just going to put all of these shelves up as high as I can and make it seem like I have a wall.
And hope that they don't fall over.
So that's, that's the rough layout of what they're talking about though, pushing the front of the building out into that grassy area. That's, I don't know, we need to get into the-
Okay, then we wouldn't have water to lawn as much.
You probably should, you can probably take that break room out.
Can we rebase?
Yeah, you guys don't need a break room.
We don't need to use much water.
The other big infrastructure project, of course, is the library building. Obviously, we've looked at a lot of options here with the library building, from food hall to multiple different iterations of public-private partnership, and nothing's worked out so far. Feeling like the next step here is, okay, if, if public-private doesn't work, would the residents be willing to approve a general obligation bond for the library to preserve it? We've been working with architects, it's been really difficult frankly, to get architects to come and have an interest in this project. We've been, we've gone down the road with three, I think, now.
Do you blame them?
I don't, yeah, we've had, but the architects that we're working with on the small area plan or GSBS, they've got a huge architecture part of that company, obviously, and they've come in and worked with Cole a little bit, and they gave us a placeholder this week of $3 million to preserve the building. They think that's a pretty good, good number to use as a placeholder.
That would be the highest cost, preserving it as is and making it look as is, which we don't.
And, and to what purpose though?
To what purpose?
That's the-
We don't necessarily have a great one, really.
Can we, how about we turn it into the op center?
Yeah, office space for the rec people, no?
I mean-
We could do that, but-
That's, okay.
As everyone, I think, seems to agree, I mean, this building is valuable to some people in the community and we're really trying to find a way to preserve it. Now, is there a use for it? We've talked obviously about maybe making part of it a Catesville museum. We're the oldest city in Davis County, but one of the few that doesn't have its own museum, so maybe using part of the space for that could be, could be nice.
For something that would be visited by elementary schools once a year and never again. I mean, I came into this position four years ago, very much wanting to save this, but as you understand, as you come to understand-
I understand.
-the expense of putting this, of running a city, I think it's a failure on us for not having done something these last four years. I, I know, you know, now you might not want to root for BYU after you hear me say this.
No, I do.
I just, I just think there's no purpose, I thought the food hall would have been wonderful because that's something would have benefited the whole city.
That's what I was saying, like, you can't, you can't take, like, you're just giving yourself like negative mojo for saying that you should have done something over the last four years, but for three of the, three of the years, we thought that a food hall was going-
No, no, I know, we tried, but when has the juice got worth the squeeze?
I will say, going into this, you know, I wanted to see what we could do, and I appreciate everyone's patience with the due diligence and the, we have literally talked to everybody possibly out there, I feel like, exhausted every resource. I think that there's, there's a potential, there's actually a big potential for maybe a donor to come in, but not for all of it. But do we, is that even a good use, you know? Is it, is it a good idea to save it? After spending all this time, I am bugged too that we haven't made a decision. And so personally, I don't even think this needs to, at this point, I would be really comfortable telling people, look, we have literally tried everything. And if someone wants to add you up with $3 million, you've got six months to do it or something, because I don't know what else we can do with it and still be responsible to the other needs that we have. And I've been on team John, like, try to save it as much as possible, but if this, if this is on the ballot, I really don't think it'll, I really don't think it'll pass.
Well, but that's kind of, I think that's been my biggest thing, I think that's been everybody's fear. I certainly do not want to be part of the council that tears the old library building.
I, I don't either, but I don't know what else to do.
But I get what you're saying, no, but that's where I think like, that, it's a big enough decision, it's a, it's a big enough impact on an old city, it's an old enough building in an old city that it should go to the ballot. Like, this is the type of thing that I think shouldn't be legislatively decided by five people.
But it can't, I, okay, so it's in terms of being on the ballot.
Yeah, so I feel like you throw it on the ballot and you run into a couple of things, like you say how much it would cost to do it, and, and then maybe what you end up with is, you know, the big problem in the past is everybody's been like, well, maybe someone will fork up this or fork up that, but when the proverbial shit hits the fan, are they going to do it? And that's what you'll find. I mean, I think that if it was on the ballot and somebody said, hey, we've raised one and a half million dollars, like, even if it didn't pass the ballot, I would say, well, are we willing to?
But you can't do that. If it doesn't pass the ballot, you can't go ahead and build, you can't.
Yes, you can.
You can, but that's what people get mad at.
Well, they get mad at it, but I think that those would be extenuating circumstances in my opinion, that's when it would be, it wouldn't be like the police station situ- sorry, but situation. This would be, I think that would be different, it'd be like, okay, yeah, we, the ballot initiative was, do we want to pay $3 million to fix it? Now people have ponied up one and a half million dollars to repair it. Now the ballot is moot because it's not 3 million anymore, it's one and a half, and so-
But people don't.
I don't know, I just, I just think-
Is that a what-if?
I'm just saying it's a what-if, right?
Okay, okay, because, because we have zero right now.
Right, no, this is all hypothetical, but again, that's my point, is that like-
He just wanted to remind you.
I, I think that it would be, if, if that were to be the case, I think that's the only way it gets saved, if it doesn't pass the ballot, is if, is if we get like a huge donor field.
In fairness, if, if this does go on the ballot, which I agree with what you're saying, it needs to be on the same ballot or the same, yeah, the same ballot that the fire station's on. They need to be together because people need to realize, okay, either put $3 million into this-
Yeah.
Or we put 12-
Together but separate votes.
I mean, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Not together, I'm just saying separate, separate things.
Let's not have a writer.
Yeah, these are both decisions we need to make, this is our question.
Because ultimately, yeah, I mean, if that became, if that became the thing, like, same, I agree, have it on the same, the same ballot as the fire.
Yes, not as-
And then if it didn't pass-
It doesn't pass.
We'll take some of the bricks and put it on the fire station. I've always so thought that like, it's almost irresponsible for us though to just, if, if in fact it does get torn down, is it irresponsible for us to like have this just be like an open spot? Do we want somebody to like ground up, build a, build a restaurant there? Do we want to just?
I think it would be cool to have a public use, an ice skating rink or, you know, something that the public could use would be cool, but that would also cost money. Or do we sell that parcel of the-
That's all I was just, that's all I was just hypothetically, like, do we sell that piece? You saying that we sell, but then it's just a blank piece.
So that's, that's, John, you're, I mean, you're on with something, right? Because the reason why this didn't pencil out for alchemy for the food hall is because at the end of the time when they're done with, or whatever, when they're paying off their mortgage, they don't have an asset-
Right.
-to sell off. And, and so, right, we would own the ground, they would, they would have owned the building, was how that was. But if they own the ground and the building, at the end of the time where they're paying off whatever they spend to do the renovations, they have an asset that they end up owning, that's why it didn't pencil out.
And I know Mike's adamant about not selling land, but it's like, dude, what else are we going to do with that piece? Like, are we really going to just put grass there?
No, no, it's got to be something.
It won't be the city hall block anymore though, it will be just empty space. It'll be empty space.
That building was designed and funded and, everybody's going to laugh when I say this because you've all seen my office. It was, it was designed, funded, and built during World War II.
Yeah.
And if that building, like, even if you kept portions of like one or two of the walls and incorporated that into a cool memorial, I'm not saying-
No, no, I agree.
-that the cemetery war memorial isn't cool, but it's not cool actually.
It's not.
And I'm, I'm obsessed with that period, era in American history, like, do something cool there, you'd probably lose most of the building, but if you could save part of the building and turn that into some like memorial for service people who've served from Catesville City.
Even if it's a smaller building is what you're saying, like something-
Small building, using, using rock. What works historically about the building is the rock.
Rock.
Is the rock.
As you and I have talked many, many times, if they would take the building down, save all the corbels, save all the rock, build pathways, build benches, build all kinds of stuff, put monuments in there and become part of the city center.
That we could use as a roller rink in the summer.
You were really on this like two weeks out of here.
We can have a roller skating rink in the summer and auto roller rink and then it could be an ice skating rink in the winter. It would be cool.
Skate park, right?
No, not a skate park.
Regardless, it needs, regardless, it needs to go on. Regardless, can we all, can we all agree that it needs to go on the ballot? Can we all agree that it needs to go on the ballot?
Well, now, if, if you put it on the ballot and you say, you go on with the fire station, that means you're talking next November, you're not saying put it off a year.
And see, John, that's the way I feel about the fire station. I think it's no disrespect to council, but I think the fire station is bigger than five people.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Oh, 100%, needs to go, no, that's why it needs, same thing, it needs to go on the ballot.
You think so, Mikey? I'll take that Pepsi challenge.
Well, if you lose, it's not a good, it's not easy to pick.
It's not. But we still, you know, still take 12 minutes.
But then, but regardless, Mike, we've kicked it down the road a couple of years, his bladder or something.
Well, for what it's worth, the, to put these numbers in context on the library, if it went on the ballot as a geo-bond, we'd be looking at $22.15 a year for the average house.
Oh my gosh, that's cheap.
It is cheap, on top of everything else.
That's $2, that's less than I spend at Maverick.
I, I get it.
It's $22 a year.
I know, but if you stack on time.
No, but we're just talking about this. Oh, you're going to contribute to your-
If we knock the building down, build a smaller building, had a library or not a library, a museum space, and then an open space, it would be cheaper than that, $3 million.
So cheap. What's going to happen is, what's going to happen is the library is going to pass and the fire station is.
Not funny, Josh.
I'm just saying, that might happen.
Well, sure, you throw 18 million dollars.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to make the fire station, it's going to act, ah, I can't. I'll vote for this one, but I'll vote for that one.
That's what people are saying.
Why don't you put the firefighters in the old library?
Okay, let's do that.
I'd put John on this one, I don't think it'll hurt to put it on the ballot. I mean, because it's not like we have imminent, like, we're still working with residents-
Yeah.
-to figure out what we want to do downtown anyways, and we fixed the roof, so it's less likely to fall down.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's fine doing it, I'm just saying personally, I feel like-
Then you fix the-
I've talked to everybody.
We fixed the ramp, but we haven't fixed the water filtration.
Oh, well.
Yeah, you go in there today and it's, the longer you wait, the longer you wait, the decision is going to make itself, it's going to fall down on its own.
Hey, when Brandon did that to that, he, that would-
That would actually be-
You guys tried.
Power department tried, he tried.
Power department did their part. Brandon tried to burn that business.
Okay, but, but like you said, these conversations, this is just for having conversations, not making decisions tonight, just, yeah, these are just, let's think about all this.
All right, so mayor, do we want to take a straw poll, just not, this is not an action item obviously, but just to see where everybody is as far as do we put it on this year, or sorry, next year or wait till 2027?
Yeah, let's take a straw poll.
I mean-
Josh, you're first.
Which one, which one are you talking about?
Sorry, which one are you talking about?
Both.
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 Yeah.
Should we put both on next year or wait?
Come on, Mikey, jump on the challenge, buddy.
I don't get it.
Oh, no, we're asking you.
I'll be honest with you, I want it to pass, and I'm afraid if you put it on this year, it will not pass.
Each of you gets half a vote.
Yeah, what is that?
Because you cannot hit it with a 300, a 300 and then a more than that.
My personal opinion is that he would make a council decision and tear it down.
I don't, I don't disagree.
And don't put it on a bar.
I think if you really want to fire-
That's my personal opinion.
Guys, Emery's rolling her eyes at us, I think we have to talk one at a time.
Emery, do you hear my personal opinion? My personal opinion is that we would make a legislative decision and tear it down because we have tried. We have done our due diligence. You know, I think be careful what you ask for, because if you say, hey, here's a $3 million deal, even though we don't have a plan with what to do with it-
I don't know why.
-it might pass.
You are funny.
And then you're going to have to staff it.
Make a German duck.
You know, if it's a city, if it's a city-run entity, you're going to have to staff it with a couple of folks, and that's again, that's additional folks that then, you know, I don't know.
You know, I think if we had conversations, maybe we make some Facebook videos or we put it on social media and, and start a conversation about this, I think it would be really interesting to get some feedback. You know, we'll have a handful of people that just love it and don't even know it's empty. I think that's the thing, a lot of people don't even know it hasn't been used in 10 years. And I think if we have that conversation, at least we can get a better feel for it. And I'm okay, I feel like I've done my due diligence as the mayor to really figure out what can we do, what's possible. There's still a potential that some, I have talked to someone that's very legitimately serious that does have a chunk of money that would be willing to throw at it, but it's whether or not the city is going to come up with the others.
We've got to do good fly, we just got to do these good flyers with these QR codes, that's just as good as getting a-
I think we just need to start having conversations, but your question was ballot But your question was ballot twenty, twenty-six or ballot twenty-seven, assuming that's.
If you do the ballot sooner, sooner than later.
The consultant, you say twenty-six.
The consultant from GSCS does have a little bit of information that's been gathered on the small area plan that they'll present next Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, and if I recall correctly, I think that most people that were responding were responding towards eliminating the building. I, my recollection on that could be wrong, but they'll go over that data with the planning commission to council next week.
John?
I don't know who the hell they're talking to.
Twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Huh?
Twenty-six or twenty-seven for, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I, twenty-six, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if you want my opinion, I'd say because we are doing a, a big tax increase, which includes a gym next year, I would say it's already taken for twenty-six. I'd say you put the fire station on the ballot on twenty-seven and you put the library on there in twenty-eight. Because even if you did put the library there sooner, we really don't have the ability to do that many projects at that, that much going on at one time in the city anyway, and we don't have any money. And I don't care if it sits there right now for two years to go on the ballot because we don't have any plans for it. We don't have any money to do anything with it anyway.
Okay.
I'll change my vote to him.
Abby?
Please change his vote.
Twenty-seven?
No, I like the idea of pacing it. So I'd be okay doing.
Fire station first.
Fire station twenty-six, library twenty-seven.
I said twenty-seven.
I know, I'm changing my.
Hey, keep feeding them. John, keep eating.
So twenty-six for the fire station, twenty-seven for the.
I like the idea of doing both because I actually do think the people will look at it. I think that that could change their vote on the fire station. Cause I think they could be like, eh, I'm okay with twenty-two dollars each, uh, month, I'm not great, or a year, I'm not great with.
Jason and I have had this conversation.
Yeah.
So I like my, cause I did a pacing it, but I say one year up.
Okay, one year up.
Um, I'm fine with doing both in twenty-six. I think people will look at it. I mean, I would look at it and be like.
So you'd be doing all three in twenty-six?
All three. On what, on the ballot?
Well, the two on the ballot plus the tax increase.
We are, but we've already committed.
Right, but we don't have to put that on the ballot.
No.
Okay, I'm talking about things we should put on the ballot in twenty-six, and I think it, I'm okay with putting both on the ballot in twenty-six. If we'd rather do twenty-six and twenty-seven.
That's okay.
Fire station, library, that's probably fun too.
Okay, all right, so I think you have your consensus.
That's twenty-six, so we've got. John? Oh, sorry.
I think we'll have it out there.
Josh, John and Abby are all for twenty-six for the, at least the fire station. Well, this is straw poll. We're not taking action. Um, cause the act, the real action will take, will happen next year. Okay. So, does everyone wanna take a five minute break real quick? We've got like twenty minutes more of discussion on employee stuff, okay?
That's, okay, that's a good point too. I agree.
I mean, I'll, I'll know, we'll, I'll, we'll know on the library building this, okay, first quarter. I, I think we can do a few surveys. So many cities just live in surveys, where they're home survey and it's free. None of us fill in the picture. Everybody wants to do that.
I, I like just, just a few questions.
Yeah, just a couple of questions and just keep it easy.
Well, we say, man, you remind me of what's right in New York.
We're starting our meeting. John.
All right, let's, uh, testing. Let's get back to work.
John.
Yeah.
Knock it off.
We're going home.
Gosh, damn. Really, man, man.
What is wrong with him?
We've only got eighteen minutes left.
All right. We told you we'd get out of here by nine o'clock, so. The last thing we want to hit on as far as strategic priorities go is, is kind of just an employee plan. Hold on for that. Every year, we spend a lot of time in the budget process talking about employee, you know, compensation, new staffing positions, how much are we going to do for merit, COLA, market adjustments, things like that. And I think, um, I think a more ideal approach personally is to take a deep dive on all those things, you know, once every few years rather than every single year. It kind of have a plan, and it doesn't have to be a binding plan, it shouldn't be a binding plan in any means like that, but just sort of what is our target, what is our approach going to be? We did this several years ago with the vehicle replacement, um, you know, plan. Uh, it used to be that the council would debate, well, should we, you know, replace that police car, this fire truck? Uh, and every item kind of became, you know, its own little discussion, and then we finally got onto a plan where, you know, we're just going to do these vehicles on, on this, you know, this many years for a police car, this many years for a fire truck, and now it's just part of the plan. It's, it was a thoughtful plan, and, and it just, I think it's a much more effective, efficient way to, to approach it. Uh, I think the same thing could be done with employees, especially when it comes to kind of like merit, COLA. And again, we're not talking tonight at all about numbers or what that plan should be, just the idea that we would like as, as staff to kind of come to the council with, with a plan. This would be its own, you know, meeting because this is something we could easily spend hours on, and, and we don't have that kind of time right now. So when the department heads met to look at strategic priorities, um, a couple of months ago, this was the one thing that we thought was kind of left out in February. You know, the employees, uh, everything we do in the city as far as providing services is based on employees, and having quality employees is part of our mission statement, you know, to, to have a well-trained workforce that we maintain, and being able to attract and retain quality employees is, is, is key to that. So these are some of the points that the department has made, uh, when we met in September, talking about, you know, employees are kind of infrastructure of the city really in terms of how we provide services, it's all done through our employees. I was asked this question when I was interviewed, uh, for this job, in terms of, you know, what would you prioritize higher, you know, resident needs or employee needs? And I, I truly believe this, but I think you prioritize resident needs by prioritizing employees, it's not either or. Uh, we take care of our residents by ensuring that we have the quality of employees and talent here to do that. And so, you know, we talk a lot about resident expectations and providing the level of service and quality of life that they expect, and again, that ties back to employees as well, making sure we have the talent to provide the services, um, that we want to provide. It was brought up in the department head meeting, you know, the optics of the five percent below average. A few years ago, as you know, we, we tried to raise employee compensation to at least five percent, um, below average within the market. Marin ran some numbers, I don't want to get into this too much, I won't even really get it, but there's just some optics issues there, you know, should we be shooting for average or above average is the question there. And then, just to, again, the cost of losing people, there's a real cost, not just in terms of losing the level of service we can provide, you lose institutional knowledge, you lose talent, and there's the cost of hiring and rehiring, training and retraining employees. We don't want to be a training ground for other cities, of course, and, uh, so the idea behind a compensation policy getting over to the right-hand side there is, um, again, avoiding the, the time we spend rehashing, should we do COLA, should we do merit this amount or that amount every year? Let's just, if we can, come up with a policy that everyone seems to agree on and use that policy going forward and, and spend less time hashing it out. And I think what that would do honestly is two things, I think it would not only save us time, but it would also build trust with, I think, both the public and, um, employees. Sometimes when we're having these honest conversations, and I know that they're all honest questions, honest intent, um, but sometimes it, it, I think it can lead to like, well, why, why do we need to be spending money on, you know, extra employees? And I wonder if that creates some sort of like distrust, and I think with employees, employees watch these meetings, um, and tune in, and, and I think sometimes get, you know, come back and like, wow, we're not valued, and I know those, that's not the intent of the conversation, but it's just, you know, it's a messy conversation, it's a delicate conversation, and I think having a good solid policy would help us through, you know, navigating some of those issues. And then, kind of talking about what kind of policy should we have, apples to apples, you know, what does the market look like, who should our comparator cities be? Um, you know, should we, should we take out certain cities, you know, and I think those are all conversation points that we need to have. I think the apples to apples thing is important to a good policy. Where are we losing employees to? Those are our comparators, or our competitors and comparators. Uh, so, so those are the ideas, again, I, I don't, I know we don't have the time tonight to get into details, but just the idea of a plan, I've worked for a number of cities that have had plans and some that don't, and I feel like the cities that adopted a plan, a compensation plan, just had a much smoother process, um, and a much more effective process. And, you know, we can take the time we need to, to decide what that plan should be, of course, but I think doing it one time really good and then leaving it alone a little bit for, for a few years would really, could be beneficial. So with that, comments, questions about the idea of having, uh, an employee, uh, plan? Compensation plan in specific?
I really like this idea because I hate talking about it every year, and I feel like it's something that we spend a ton of time talking about, we never change it. My reason for talking about it every year is because I, I don't like that it's called merit, because I don't feel like it's used as a tool necessarily for driving productivity, and I've talked to you about this, like, and, and also I don't begrudge any of the department heads for not using it as a tool, because it would be so difficult to know, you know, how you give one and don't give the other, and how that becomes just your opinion versus data-driven. I did talk to Josh about, he had mentioned, and I'm not trying to sell you out here, Josh, but that, uh, one of the cities does a thing where they essentially would take the monies that, like, each department, that each employee within each department would get, say if you were talking about three percent, you'd quantify how much money that is to give all the employees their three percent raise or step up, or whatever you want to call it. And then you, you tell the department head they, they get to spend that money on their employees however they would so choose. I don't know if that's what you were saying, Josh, is how they do it in that city, but I've thought about that, like, that to me ends up being a little bit more unique in the sense that you could say like, well, I'm going to give these guys six percent because they're getting fifteen dollars an hour and they work their butts off and they should go up more, but that means you've got to rob a little bit from Peter to pay Paul, and you've got to give two percent to some of maybe some of your employees that aren't necessarily performing to the level. I know that's not exactly what you were asking for, Jason, because you're trying to simplify it maybe, but in a lot of ways, if we were to say like, as a, as a council, like, don't bring us, don't bring us this, bring us this every four years or something, and, but for the next four years, just do three percent across the board, but, but if we were to maybe think about a hybrid model there that still gives you guys the opportunity to use that money in places that maybe you'd, you'd like to, so that not everybody's just getting it as a guarantee, would that be something you would like?
So the government, I've, I've been used to that, we've done it for thirty-four years, that's the way the Air Force does it.
But it's usually, but it's usually one percent or point eight.
No, no, it's not, it's usually three and a half or four percent, based on our wages. Up at Hill, the wages were about four point something million with all my folks.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I would get three and a half or four percent, and I distributed them just like that.
Talking active duty, yeah, you're right.
No.
Active duty.
No, no, no.
My, my whole, yeah.
Talking civilian.
Civil, yes. Yes, and it worked rather well.
I agree.
And having been, you know, on the award, doing award stuff, you know, for civilians, even though I was active duty, it was fairly similar to ours, but, you know, they were, but they had the ability to give someone four percent or up to a certain percent.
Yeah.
And take, you know, not have the, say, lower, poor performing people might only get one percent.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's how true. And then you may want to give five to somebody else, you had a spreadsheet with all your folks on them.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at, like, I'm sure that it might be a little bit of a nightmare for you, but it also figure out some type of spreadsheet that just basically says I have got thirty-five thousand dollars. If I give everybody three percent, which you could choose to do, it'd meet your three thou- thirty-five thousand dollars, but say he's like, look at, man, Peter, Paul, Mary, Joe, all these people, I really, they really deserve four or five percent, now you put that in your spreadsheet, okay, now I've got to make up those dollars somewhere else, I've got to pull from.
It's really not much different than we're doing now.
Right.
I think.
The hard, go, sorry.
Oh, no, please, go ahead.
I rarely get to hear you speak.
I, I, I think that some of the difficulty is we, you know, the, the ability for promotion is so limited in the city, the vast majority of my department are maintenance workers, and I, I, I could have probably over half of my department is currently maintenance workers, and of those half, more than half will probably remain maintenance workers their entire time with Casel City, and, and there's your minimum on the range, and there's your maximum on the range, and, and, uh, the, the ability to like, you know, compare it to like the, the military with chief, as I've talked with him, like, that, yeah, there aren't the like, well, you know, are you the sergeant or, you know, are you getting into officer ranges? You know, I've got a guy, uh, five years ago that retired, started his time as a maintenance worker, retired after thirty-two years as a maintenance worker. Um, and so the ability to recognize, i- if we have people that aren't performing, it's our responsibility to help like improve performance, or unfortunately, like, we, we have to say goodbye to people. Um, but in the situation where you have somebody who's performing the way that they should be according to their job description, and then you have somebody who is just absolutely stellar and phenomenal, moving together at, at the same rate, that it doesn't.
It's hard to swallow.
Yeah, it, it is hard to swallow, these guys are like, man, I'm, I'm, I'm just like trying to do everything that I can to show my value and to try and further the goals of the organization, and this guy over here that's doing everything that the job description says but isn't going above and beyond, I walked away with the exact same thing, so, um, yeah.
So in one of my early jobs, going back about twenty years, um, I was the assistant to the city manager and, and per slash personnel manager for the city.
Hang on, were you assistant to the city manager?
Assistant to, right.
Or were you assistant manager?
White.
ACM?
Assistant to.
They're different.
Yeah. So anyway. Good clarification.
That's really good.
And we had the same problem of, uh, this morale issue with, with merit pay was what it was. And, and, you know, employees or supervisors had sort of this pot of money and you could distribute it however you wanted, but the issue was everyone felt like, well, if I had that other supervisor, I'd get a different raise, or this guy doesn't deserve it, I've done more than him, and we tried so hard to find ways to make it more objective and fair, but everything we tried just didn't fix it. It, it, no matter what, at the end of the day, it became, it came down to a subjective decision, and, and so we, we implemented some things, I built a spreadsheet kind of like what you're talking about, and did all this training, and I thought it was this great thing, it seemed to work for about a year, and then it went right back to the same old, you know, subjective, it was unfair, and so the city ditched it and went back to just doing merit, uh, or really, it's a step really in, in reality. And that, and they did it for two reasons, one was because they couldn't implement a truly objective way to, to do it, because none of us, we don't make widgets, we don't do sales or anything that's truly objective and trackable in numbers, it all comes down to what somebody thinks, you know, your value is versus this guy's value, and it's so hard to, to document that and show that in a numerical way. So they got rid of it for that, and then the other reason was all the other cities weren't doing it, and they were losing people to other cities because it just felt like, I'm just kind of hit and miss on this city, like, what I'm going to get from year to year, and, um, and so they, they can, they ditched it, and I think that's what we're facing too, is other cities have a defined system where you're going to pretty much expect to get, you know, this much a year till you hit the top of your range, and that's just good or bad or ugly, it's kind of what cities do. Um, and so there's the idea of having to compete with other cities and have something that, you know, is, is, can match that. Where else was I going with that? I think, yeah, it's, again, I think it's just the challenge. The other thing I think to make note of here is we do hold employees accountable, you know, um, if you're not meeting standards, if you're not doing a good job, you're managed out of the organization, and we don't bring those things up with the council very often because they're, you know, they're personnel issues, but I, I feel like every two or three months, we're, we're letting somebody go because of a performance issue somewhere in the city, and so when people aren't meeting expectations, they are moving on, we're, we're managing them out, and so that, I think that works effectively, but for the rest of the employees, the other ninety-five percent, what, they're doing great, and I think they're earning that, that so-called step or merit, whatever you want to call it, I think merit is kind of a misnomer frankly.
Yeah, I don't like them.
There's just no way to really do truly merit pay for performance in a, in an organization like this.
I guess what I was trying to say is maybe, I, I feel like what it's doing is it's shifting, it's shifting the, uh, that decision onto the department heads, which has kind of always been my.
Oh, you don't, because you don't want to make a decision.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, no, we will have made the decision that we, we're, we're going to approve the three percent, like, it just don't bring it to us anymore, it's going to be approved.
I think the hard part is that every year has been, because we're talking COLA and we're talking the merit.
Yeah, it's just obnoxious.
And, well, I don't, it's part of what we signed up to do, I don't, I don't, I agree with what you're saying, I think the hard part ends up being the COLA, you know, when you combine the two, because as we've done, you look at the last four years with inflation being so high. You know, we've still, we've given extremely high COLA, and then you add on the three percent.
But the three, but I think that's one of the things that I, I feel like is the problem is that we, we talk about like we add on the three percent, but the three percent like back in the day was part of, used to be a step program of.
I agree.
You, you know, you, you stay employed here and each year you're going to step to the next level, it was never based off of how you perform, and so it's still, the idea or the goal really was longevity, not merit, and I think that that's the problem is like, we still, we've kept it in as a longevity type of a thing, not as a merit type of thing, but we're calling it merit.
Well, but it goes back to, um, you know, Brian's, I think Brian, you know, that most of the folks there, and they're, they're there forever, and they know that they're just going to get those step increases, and they're happy to stay in the job because they love working for Casel City. We all appreciate that.
Yeah.
Turnover is extremely expensive, you know, the last year I was with Lockheed Martin, we had, we had one area where it was twenty percent a year, so when you're talking two hundred people, there's forty people a year that we have replaced, that's really expensive. It's just, it's look at where wages are now for then, you know, six years ago when you came on council, I think you'd be, I think you'd be shocked.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's a systemic, we're, we're not going to fix the systemic issue here because you don't do something and then Farmington, then, then Farmington or Clearfield or Layton's going to rob our folks, because we have, it's a systemic problem across the, across the state, we can't fix that. But, um, but I, you know, everybody knows my feelings on all this and it's all shut up, but I agree, Jason, if, if you come up with something that, as a council, you say, okay, here's what we're going to do, and then readdress it in three years or something.
Yeah, I like that, I like that, and then I like the idea of giving the department heads a chance to unite, I mean, a secret ballot whether or not they like the idea of having the control, because I also think, like, to your point, Jason, like, it would end up being, it does end up being like, oh, well, he likes me better, he does this, but, well, yeah, but that's part of like working for somebody, like, if, if you realize that your boss doesn't like you and isn't like taking good care of you, then you go somewhere else type of, you know, I mean, I, I think that, but I don't see our guys using it from like a like or dislike, I see them using it more along the lines of what Josh is saying, which has been my problem from the get-go, is that we have guys that are making like twenty grand a year, and you're looking and like, oh, okay, let me give you your three dollar a year raise, you know, it's like those types of people, you'd love to give twenty dollars, you know, bump in pay a year, or whatever it might be. So why not give them, why not give them the control to be able, well, I'm just saying, why not give them the control to be able to do that, where they maybe give half of their employees two point seven percent, and they give a bunch of their guys six percent that are on such a lower scale that it equals out to be the same? Would you guys want that ability to do that, or is it, I mean, not to put you on the spot, or would you end up just giving everybody three percent just to keep the peace?
I guess I look at it as, it's a motivator tool, right, trying, trying to get that ten percent extra, so I, I think it, I think it could be, I haven't given it a lot of thought, but that's an interesting thing, I think it can be a motivator.
It, it, it's hard to like either or, like, it, it's this or it's this, like, um, I, I think the morale impact is significant at times, and that's not to say that people don't recognize or appreciate the effort that goes into, you know, budgets and, and the legislative and day-to-day operations of the city. But it, I, I think it is hard for people, like, you know, a power outage when I first started that lasted like three days at I-15, so like, hey, man, I, I was on that for three days, and I, I left my kid's birthday party and I stepped away from my, what was it, anniversary to go do that, and I just want to, I want to feel valued, I want to feel like, like, hey, man, we not only appreciate being able to turn the lights on, but we appreciate that you, the human being, stepped away from your stuff to go keep those lights on. And, and so it's hard to like, hey, ideally, I, I would love to be able to like evaluate and, and have a say on, you know, all of the individuals in my department, like, man, I want to recognize the value that you provide to the current and future community, um, but I also like, I, I don't want to let go and, and give up the ability to do something that's at least slightly improved over what we're doing now, if that makes sense.
Could you do a hybrid model?
What's that?
And do, if it's three percent, guarantee them a one and a half, and then have the other one and a half to divide up?
And I think they could, yeah, I like the idea of, well, so that's going to invite your speaking up about that, Josh, because like, I like the idea of them, Mike, also, of, us just voting three percent, saying, we're going to give you guys that amount, now you guys decide how you want to do it within your department.
I can tell you how mosquito abatement did it, but they adopted the way that Davis County did it, is they would say, okay, so COLA this year's a one and a half percent, that was pretty much a given, and that's how mosquito abatement did. Then for the, for the rest, whether it be the two percent or three percent, it was decided by the county at the time, or whoever, it's going to be a three percent possible increase, but then what you had to do at the very first of the year, you take a paper and you take your job descriptions of what you do, and you, you have to sit down with your supervisor, and you actually list out what you think your job is and what the most important parts of your job is, and you put a certain percent to that, and at the end of the, you take that three percent or whatever it was, the two percent, and, and it's really, the employee owns up to it, he has to own up to what he put down on there, and I've seen those come down as low as fifty percent or sixty-five percent, and then it's the sixty-five percent of that three percent is all you get, and so, and it, it kind of put the onus on the supervisor and the person, say, okay, did you perform your job? You said this was worth twenty percent of your job, how well do you think you did at that? And they say, well, I probably only did about forty percent, well, that's a big part of it, but they own up to it, and they say, okay, and so when you get done, you look and, so instead of getting the guaranteed three percent.
Well, no, I love your idea, I love your idea, but from a budget standpoint is what we're asking, like, from our decision standpoint, do we just give the three and let them decide?
That's what, I mean, that's how I think Marin, they've done in the past, they've always done the maximum, and then they've left it up to the, um, department heads.
But we had to decide every time and debate it.
I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm just speaking for me, it'll go back to what I said before, John, it's hard to swallow when your goal is five percent below average.
I know, we worked on that.
And they're telling us to cut their merit, that's why nobody's doing it.
Yeah.
Because we're already behind as a city.
We'll, we'll talk about that.
So if we get away from that, your system will work.
Yeah.
So, so Jason, I think what I hear everyone saying, well, most of us are saying, come, introduce the policies, bring us some policies as we can. We want to make sure that we don't lose our legislative ability to prevent salary creep so that it's out of control, and then you have to start over, you know, we don't want that, but we do want to be, to not have this be a political discussion.
Right.
Because I get how, I, we understand it's.
Eventually they hit a cap, so they, yeah, on their.
Yeah, so, so maybe, I think, I think that there's consensus, it seems like, come, come back with that.
I, I think I've, yeah, there's been some great input here, um, and that's all I was looking for, is just, okay, are we, okay with coming up with a policy, we can come up with, with a recommendation of a policy, and, you know, and the policy is just that, it's not binding, it's not like we're saying, okay, we're binding the council for the next four years that this has to be done, obviously, just like the vehicle replacement plan, you know, if we have a budget year where it's like, hey, things below us, we, we obviously, you know, council can obviously do whatever it needs to with the budget, but I think this will help us just make things smoother and hopefully do it in a way that feels, makes the council and employees both feel comfortable and confident in what to expect, you know, down the road. So, um, yeah, thank you for that input, and, you know, thank you again for everything tonight, this has been a great, great meeting with a lot of good input, so, any other questions, items that need to be brought up?
John, anything to share?
No, I like it, Mike and I, I got caught, uh, on an open mic saying some stuff, you'll have to listen to it later.
It's okay, that'll be good.
It won't be.
What's the timestamp?
Yeah, yeah, give us a timestamp.
Every, get, get that for us, would you?
I think it's awesome.
This has been a great discussion, thank you for your time, everybody, um, do you guys feel like we've accomplished some things?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, my thing said till nine-thirty, I'm ready to go.
My thing said nine-thirty.
If mine did, I didn't believe it.
I didn't either, I'm like, really?
Jason, good job.
That was really good, yeah.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Can we turn these mics off?
Yeah.
Winds it off.